Silence for Patricia Sargent, grandmother to Alyssa Pomerini, Clinton Elementary School. Thank you. So Steve, do I just go right to the budget now?
Yeah, you can open it up as a budget hearing for us.
Okay, we're going to open tonight's Clinton School Committee meeting for April 8th through 2024, start with the budget public hearing.
So the budget that was presented to the Finance Committee was available on our website is the Budget Version B. It was, we presented it on last Wednesday. And essentially, the bottom line of it is the Chapter 8 increase, so the Chapter 70 increase to the town this year, right now, is currently about $1 million. And our budget was asking, requesting an increase of like 1.28 million dollars. So basically, we were asking the town to pass through the educational aid and provide additional 280,000 roughly. We presented that to them. The next steps would be the, what we're hoping is the House, Chapter 70 numbers will come out, hoping as early as Wednesday. And the Finance Committee said that they would hopefully have some pieces all put together to give us some feedback probably a week after April vacation because they had a few more hearings still from different departments. So hopefully, we'll bring those two together. So yes, at this point, you know, it's not, I don't think there's a lot that's controversial in the budget. We're not eliminating any positions or anything like that, but typically, what we do is we have this public hearing so that the members of the public can provide comments on the budget if they haven't.
Any, any public comment on the budget?
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a comment on the budget. I've done a lot of years in participating in the school budget, 20-plus years of being involved in reviewing the district. And I've got to tell you, the superintendent's presentation of the budget was the best I've ever seen in all the years, other than when Mr. Bailey was superintendent. He does very well in conveying the facts and the information. And he also does very well in preparing the budget itself. I learned to my surprise that over the past two budget years, there's been no increase to the local taxes due to the school budget. The budgets he's been able to create, or the committee and he have been able to live within the budget that they were given by the state and the town previously. And that's pretty interesting because it never happened during the time that I was around. And the other thing that impressed me about this budget was that built into this is the absorption of the loss of the ESF funds. This year, he's been able to create a budget that typically, those funds are there, you do what you do with it, and then you're stuck with the bill after they run out. And he's been able to absorb those, the loss of the ESF funds into this, and he's planning for the, what's the, like, the next student opportunity. He's already planning ahead with a preliminary plan to absorb the loss of those funds. And that's pretty impressive for me. I've never seen that done on a school budget in all the years I was involved, so I want to express my appreciation, man, for that work.
Anyone else here then?
No.
Close the budget, budget public hearing then. At this point, we'll close the budget, budget public hearing and move on to the regular school committee meeting. We have a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes for March 25th, 2024.
Good move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? We don't hear for public comment. Student rep? CTA?
It's quick, quick.
The changes that the church continues to move forward. And we're working on a plan, as far as I know, to move those people into the new classroom shield. I have a meeting with the esteemed principal tomorrow about something else, so I think I'm going to get a little bit more information from her. And CTA is also working on, with coming up with a document, to help our members outline what are the steps that they have to do when they want to retire, especially since, you know, one sheet, this, 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 here's your checklist to do. And how health insurance works also, because it's different if you're under 65, and different if you're over 65. So those are our things, the list of MCAS testing in all three buildings. And springy sprung. It's good for the kids who are going to be able to get outside. And there was a lot of information today about how to be safe.
Good to see you, Rob.
Thank you.
PTA.
We made it. Good evening. It's a news to share. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So first announcement is we are up to 93 members for our PTA for the school year. At our last meeting on April 4th, we were able to support all three schools with $6,600 in funding for field trips, for a slew of classes, including CES and CMS, and the entire CHS after prom funding for their classes.
Wow.
So that's amazing.
Thank you.
The Clinton PTA is now award-winning, if you didn't see our poster over the weekend. The 114th Annual Meeting of the Massachusetts PTA was on Saturday, April 4th. Becky and I attended to learn more about statewide and national PTA efforts and network with some other PTA leaders. And in recognition, we were first to submit our membership members with a 25-member increase over last year and earned a $50 gift card that we're going to put towards teacher appreciation. In the membership increase category, we had a 137% increase in membership over last year.
Wow.
I've seen a wonderful certificate for that. For our board, the Spirit of PTA Award was awarded to our treasurer, Melissa Colleton, for her efforts for going above and beyond, not only for her own family, but for the families of all the students in the Clinton Public Schools District. I would greatly appreciate her. A little awkward, but the Outstanding Local Unit Communications Award is given to me for my efforts with the newsletter and increasing communication throughout the district with our PTA. And as a thank you to our president, Becky, for nominating both of us and for finding ways to do that and to recognize us as school members, because absolutely, I don't remember to read all the emails, and she does. 2024 scholarships for high school seniors are available. There is one more PTA event on the 23rd, which is the LPEC Multicultural Night, where they can sign up to volunteer. April 20?
Nope.
Okay. Yes, and we have cleanup day on April 20th, which is 9 to 12. We're doing the Clinton Elementary School Fields. They can sign up to volunteer for that as part of their eligibility for the scholarship, which the application will close on April 30th. The nominations for PTA Board officers and chairs for 2024-25 are currently being accepted. Form is needed to be in by June 1st for the June continuing meeting. Our next meeting is May 2nd at 6:30 with a change of time. It's 15 minutes later due to the CES event that's taking place the same night. Our catalog fundraisers here at CMS, our next door at CMS started on 4/8. Catalogues went home today. And our next book fairs are CMS, April 22nd through 26th, which is right after vacation, and CES from May 6th through 10th. The other big thing that's taking place is Teacher Appreciation Week, from May 6th through 10th. We are currently seeking sponsorships and partnering, we know for sure, with nothing but cakes. We had Enracing Cane's of Marlboro, and they're working with us to put together some really great things for that first week that the teachers come back to school. And we requested a budget increase to spend a little bit more on them, and it was approved unanimously at our meeting on April 4th. We're a little busy.
I'd say.
We don't stop, so. Thank you. Thank you. So yes, some of these, we were surprised about our membership increases and things because you submit, and we didn't know until we saw the printed program that we're actually getting some awards. So we are very proud of our progress.
You did great. I missed the last meeting, but the bingo night was awesome. So I didn't get a chance to extend my gratitude because I did miss the last meeting. So great job with that. It was fun calling numbers and letters and all that great stuff. You guys did a great job.
Good job with your night. Thank you, everyone.
Hear from CPAC or LPEC. Dr. Mark.
All right, so the first order of business is our middle school principal update. So our middle school principal, new middle school principal is here tonight, so I asked Mr. Steffi, if you want to come on up. There's a press release in your packet. I did, this was in the paper. So Tyler Steffi will be joining us in July 1st officially, but we'll kind of, we were just meeting before this meeting to kind of almost start the transition planning process. He's currently the interim principal for Waylon Middle Schools. Prior to that, he spent five years assistant principal in Concord Middle Schools. And I'll tell you, he is fluent in Spanish, which a lot of the students seem to pick up on because they said that's, we need someone who's fluent in Spanish so that they can understand the Spanish curse words.
You've got to start somewhere. You have to start somewhere.
You can understand us, but we curse.
So I don't know if there's anything you would like to, I just, I mean, I left a ton out there, so I don't know if there's anything you want to highlight or...
Yeah, just to thank you guys for being here and welcoming me. One thing is I did get to spend a little time with the school committee on my town, and it's not lost in me how much work you guys do to keep us all moving forward. So thank you for having me here. You know, I, early on, I read about and heard about anecdotally the kind of tradition and pride of the Clinton Public Schools, and I've seen that since my first conversation back in February. And I've seen it at each time I've come out here to visit, and I'm really excited to work humbly to build off the progress that Bob and Mike and Jen have put forth at the middle school. I generally like to lead with energy and humility and think, what's working well? How can I continue to keep that work going? So I'm really, really excited about that. I've got an eight and 10-year-old. I think a lot about what would I want for my child right now. That's a lot of the work that I do, and so I keep them with me as I work forward. My wife's an educator as well. We talk about education more than we ought to. So really excited to be here. I'm really excited, I said to Steve when we were talking earlier, just send me all the stuff. I'm really excited to jump in. I'm really excited about all the different projects. I'm not sure if I should even mention, I'll say this, when I was in Concord, I was the assistant principal there for five years as we were ushering all the planning that went into a new building that's currently being built. And so I'm familiar with the energy and excitement and confusion and trepidation. I'm sort of literate with that fence, what we talked about as the fence-up yet. And so I'm excited to participate in that conversation, however, it continues to develop.
Welcome. Welcome. Great to have you.
All right, our next agenda item is Strategic Plan Goals Update. So in your packet is a revision of a mission statement, revision statement, the core values, and overarching goals. So we didn't get, we didn't drill down to the action steps for the overarching goals yet. The plan was to try to get the higher-level stuff done first, and then once we agreed on the overarching goals, then we would drill down to the individual action steps. I do think that, you know, one of the things that we talked about as we went through this, we started this back in October, I think, when we first brought some of these up to the school councils, at the tri-council meeting, is that, you know, there was sort of a climate change since the last time that we did this work. And that, you know, while last time we wrote this, you know, you might have said sort of all students, or you might have said some things like that, where you were really trying to sort of, you know, imply sort of that equity lens. But now, you know, we're really in a much more, more position where we want to just include it in there when we can. And then the, and name it when we can name it. The core values, we kind of changed those up to be understanding of value itself, active achievement, understanding of value of self, understanding of value of others, engage with families, communities, and the world. Those are more modeled after the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's core values. They came out with a document that sort of termed it that way, so that's sort of why we kind of went more with those buckets. We added a few more things. I think the last one, in one of the feedback iterations, people thought that we were, family engagement wasn't in there enough, and that's why that last one, we included families with community and the world. And then we have the overarching goals. And I know one of the big things, if you, those goals and a lot of this, this stuff, I know a lot of the feedback was, people didn't really like the way some of the goals, a lot of the goals were worded as like, you know, CPS will strive. And they sort of felt like it was, it wasn't necessarily strong enough, and so we were going to try to really accomplish that. So a lot of them have been kind of reworded to be a little more direct. And, and that's where we are. So I'm not asking for any formal approval on this tonight. What this document represents is, we had the, so in October, we had a preliminary revision, we got feedback from a survey from the tri-councils, we put together a draft that we presented in January. We had the school councils go back and kind of critique it again and really kind of wordsmith and send that feedback to us. This incorporates a lot of that feedback. I think the next step we'd like to do is sort of, I'd like to share this with the, and a survey with this, with everybody in the district through an email, so that we can get any feedback on that. And then we would probably, with the goal of at least having these mission, vision, core values and overarching goals, I'd like to have those finalized as best we can by the end of the school year. So I'll probably send this out in the next week or so, just try to get that out. So we have it set up as a survey where we can get feedback from individuals. So any questions on that process?
No.
Financial updates, FY '25 Budget Version B is in your packet. We don't need to go over it again. There aren't really any changes since the last time you guys got this and we went over it. We're kind of in that holding pattern, as I mentioned earlier. Open for good news on Wednesday, when we see what the House's budget comes out of, but I can hold my breath on it. We'll see. And then we'll see what we get back from the town. And, you know, as always, we've already had some preliminary conversations with principals about what's the, what's the worst-case scenario and when do we get our feedback ready? So we'll, once we get that input, we'll, we'll make it work, right? So like I said, you know, buses are going to roll in August one way or the other. We'll figure it out. The funding and finance, you know, there's some overarching goals from the old strategic plan here, you know, focusing on multi-year budgeting, continuing to compute, improve communication and transparency, explore opportunities for efficiency, explore opportunities for collaboration with other districts, identifying new and alternative sources of funding. I think, you know, the multi-year budgeting, I think we've been, we've had to do that, and I think we're doing that well. I do think we try to be as transparent and communicate as we can. Obviously, I think we do look for efficiency. That was, and that was sort of, you remember back when this was started, a lot of this was about things like, you know, efficiency in terms of like the facilities department and that kind of stuff, which we've come a long way with. So we haven't done as much in terms of collaboration with other districts, you know, and new and alternative sources of funding. Obviously, there's been a ton of them since this came out due to COVID, so we doubt that those are starting to dry up. That'll become more of a, more something that we'll want to get our eyes back on. I do think that, you know, one of the things we'll probably have to continue to look for, and I think it'll be something that you'll see when we get these action plans going, action steps going for the next strategic plan. If we are looking at some of that collaboration, I do think we're going to have to focus it around maybe vocational education, or looking for alternative sources of funding for things like career innovation pathways. So those are probably the areas that I would see where it's, it's almost, it's more of a program-driven, but it obviously has a financial cost and what are the ways you can effectively do it? Because, you know, vocational education is tricky where, you know, we've done it before where you get all the samples of like every kid that's from Clinton that went to Asabet and what shop they were in. And if you look at it, it's like, none of those shops could be self-sustained, right? Because there's so few kids in any one given shop. But, you know, could we come up with some of the, you know, few key drivers? Or do we come up with a few and partner with another district that has a few, and then we can start offering them? So I think that's, that's where that'll go in the future. Any question on the financial updates? For the 24-25 school year, we do have to take a school choice vote. We don't have to take it tonight. If you don't want to take it tonight, we can take it at like the next meeting or so. We have to take it, we have to take it prior to, prior to June 1st, because June 1st is when we have to let them know. There's an enrollment in here. We met as a admin team to review the enrollment. Our recommendations were to, for grades pre-K, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, to close those to school choice. Some separate programs, close them to school choice, which they have been in the past. Grade K, we are recommending we make one available slot, and then with a note that bases to be awarded with sibling preference. I remember last year, we did the surveys about, does anyone have a existing, you know, an existing school choice student with a student who would be coming in? We've had one person who has responded, and that person has not only responded, but followed up repeatedly. So I would recommend that we leave that up there for, for sibling preference, which is the legal, it's the only legal preference you could give, sibling preference.
So that slot is already taken?
Essentially, it would already be taken by a student who would be, who has an older sibling who is in the elementary school already.
Thanks.
7th, 8th, 9th, and 12th, we're saying that we were recommending we cap it at five slots there per grade, and 10th and 11th, three slots per grade. Typically, we don't get that many at the high school that's the choice in or choice out, but what we feel those slots will give us a little bit of flexibility. What we, what we've run in this year with it being closed, the first time we've really had it closed, is it creates, there are some things that you learn that create kind of a messy scenario, and some of it, what we've had at the secondary level where you really, you know, a student who might be 17 or 18 gets kind of put in a situation where you know if you kick them out of school right now, they're going to end up being a dropout, right? There's no way they're going to go and like enroll in another district. But if they stay, if they were able to stay here, we think we could maybe get them through. And I think that's part of what we're hoping to be able to have, some of that flexibility at the high school level with those small number of slots, is when some of those things come up, being able to make sure that we're, have the ability to do some flexibility in the best interest of those students. And it's a little easier, the key thing is 7th through 12th, it's more like you have an individual schedule where you go class to class to class to class. So it's a little bit easier for us to accommodate an extra person here or there, where when you're really looking at K to 6, it's kind of like you take the number and you divide it by the number of sections, right? So when you add another body, you're just adding, you're just making that class size all day larger, so. And a reminder that these slots only represent new school choice students, just like everything, anyone who's already been accepted through school choice gets to stay at school choice. So those were our recommended ones. If you remember, this year, we did not participate in school choice at all, so this will be kind of opening it back up again for the older grades.
Just give us a chance to adjust it a little bit.
That's fine, we can wait till the next meeting, give you a chance to adjust it. If anyone gets your ear in the meantime with questions about it, you can ask me and I can clarify them. And then, and then hopefully by next meeting, we can get it, because then I got to let the state know, we got to fill out a form for the state.
Can we also get the listing of how many schools, like per, usually we get it like per grade, how many are in each grade?
Yeah, you want to know the current?
Yes, that'd be great.
Yep.
I think that had come up in the budget meeting as well, somebody had asked at the town hall.
Yeah, I can get you a little more information on all of that.
As far as, maybe like a comparison of maybe one year, yeah.
Print those out easy from the DSE website.
Perfect. That'd be great.
So current school choice numbers and possibly the trends, and we can get that in the packet for the next meeting.
Steve, as far as the high school spots being, you know, five at grade 12, three at 10 and 11, are those like conservative estimates? Do we have people that are already asking, so like that would fulfill like what we think are going to be requests? Or are those like spots where we're literally like, nope, we're going to open up three to five spots each grade? And we have no idea if we're going to get interested in them or not, but maybe we will.
Correct. I think for those, it's, we're open to three to five slots. We don't know if we're really, they're not like, I don't have, I don't have applications for those grades, like sitting on a desk already, right? Whereas, like I said, that kindergarten one, there's an application that's sitting at our desk already with a parent who's been, to her credit, she's been, she's done everything we've asked as far as responding to the surveys and doing this stuff, starting from last year, so.
So is, is it a first come, first choice thing? Or if, like, in other words, if you are opening up three spots for grades 10 and 11, and there happen to be six applications that come forward, is it like a lottery-based decision?
So what they have to do is they have to do, the only thing that would depend is the timing. So what you're supposed to do is, you're going to have a deadline in June normally that you people have to do and apply. If you have more applicants and you have slots at that time, then yeah, you're supposed to do it.
Do a lottery, okay. Thank you.
Just a question, Steve. How difficult would it be to compare the numbers for the outfalls, school choice?
I can get you that too, with the incoming. Yeah, I can get all that one. I can get you all that information, the trends and the...
Oh, Annette, you just have them? Just like that? Wow. Look at you. Did they set this up?
So apparently, uh...
What I'd like to see is that, here you go.
And that came through, and that came through for me again and has the answers to all the questions.
Always prepared.
So this year, I would say this year, are receiving, we have 67 students who come in school choice, we have 86 who go out. Are receiving intuition is just about 400,000, are receiving, are sending tuition is 540. So it's a, it's a deficit of 140 grand. The, the main numbers, which was asked the other day, we have Neshoba, Leominster, Wachusett, Fitchburg, I'd say, and then Worcester. Those are our main school choice in figures. And out, our largest group going out is to Berlin, Boylston, and then Hudson, and then Neshoba. So that's where. And then the trends, we were, so FY '23, we were at 79 in, and we were at 75 out. So in FY '23, we were actually at a positive in terms of it. That was the first year we've been positive since it was moved back to FY '15. And then this year, we dropped to 67 to 86. But as we mentioned too, that this is the first year that we've...
Closed school choice, right?
So I can, I can still include some other stuff in the next package, but...
Okay, great. Thank you.
But you know, Annette had my back here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. And then we can, then like I said, you guys can digest that, and hopefully we can get a vote so we can, whatever works, have them get those applications online. The approved 24-25 school calendar, this, you voted on this last time. The only thing that was missing was the, the one that we added was the first day for pre-K K, which is on September 3rd. And I don't think we added the last day for them, but I think we've only kind of figured that out once we get the snow days and stuff in there, so.
I'm guessing the teachers were pretty excited about that Christmas break.
Yes.
It happens once every so often, like the eclipse, right? You get two weeks off, you look up at the sun, everybody's happy. Like, it's good.
I've been studying that many years. We had a, we had a few that were upset we were getting out later next year than this year. But I mean, we're really early this year.
We'll let you handle those ones. We'll let you handle those ones, Rob. We'll let you handle those ones.
Building project update. I don't have anything formal for you right now. We're in a little bit of a lull where we're going back and forth with the, you know, the MSBA thinking preparation for just answering any of their comments on our submission, as well as getting prepared for the board of directors meeting, which is going to be April 24th, I think. I was, yeah, 24th, it's that Wednesday. So that's the meeting where we get these voted officially, they were voted officially offer us that. So, and then that would trigger our timeline to try to accrue it in order to get them. I do know there was a meeting, yeah. If you want to share.
Yeah, sure. I had some, I had some number of questions regarding the breakdown on the budget for renovation to the existing building as opposed to new construction, because the numbers were significant, and I wanted to see a better explanation of them and what would the drivers were for, triggers for mandatory, you have to do this, if you do this, you have to do that. Dr. Meyer set up a meeting with Sean Brennan from Lamro, Regano, and Associates, and Mark I forget his name. And they were very helpful, took my questions, answered a few of them, educated me on the complexity of the triggers. It's not just as simple, if you spend 25% of the assessed value of the building on repairs, you have to do this, this, and this. It's much more complicated than that, and they're going to prepare a document that explains all that. If you do this, then you have to do that. If you don't do that, you have to do this type of sheet, so that the community can be educated on, on, I mean, they're big numbers. Was it 70 million for tier one?
Yeah, 75.
75 for tier one. And they're big numbers, and unless they're broken down in a manageable way, it's difficult for anyone, including the voters, to appreciate just what that is. I think it's going to be helpful.
Isn't there a ethics thing that we have to do this week?
Oh, so, yeah, so there's a, so, sorry, there is a building committee meeting tomorrow, the building committee, which is mostly just like updates and invoices, it's not, we're not alive in there. And then that training, I want to say is, is it the 11th?
Yeah, the 11th, at noon.
So there's a Thursday at noon, there's a training, it's through the campaign finance administration or what, Office of Campaign Finance, something like that. And the purpose of that, if you're able to attend, is just so that they're, they're going to kind of walk through the do's and don'ts, because what you guys as elected officials can say and do is different than what I, as an appointed employee, basically the town, can say and do. And just making sure that we're all aware of those rules. So we invited, the selectmen are invited to that, and anyone else at the town hall wanted to send to that as well, just so that we, you know, I think everyone has the right idea at heart, but just want to make sure you don't do anything you're not supposed to do, you know, and just make sure that we all, and some people might not know what they can do or can't do, and if you can, if you're allowed to do more because you're in an elected position, you want to probably know that, so. So those are the, those are the things that had to go over. So thank you. And we sent that link out too, right?
Yes, you did.
All right. Before and after school program, so just a FYI, and I know that Parks and Rec, I think, brought this to maybe the personnel board to get some preliminary approvals and positions.
Yeah, she called me Thursday or Friday, and I was as confused as I usually can. I knew I got it here.
One other thing, so right now, the before and after school program is run kind of by the schools, it is by us, and we do it, but it's sort of a separate program. And one of the things that we've been talking for the last few years, I'd say, with Parks and Rec, is about potentially transitioning the before and after school program to Parks and Rec as a Parks and Rec program. There's a couple of things we do think it would help with. One, you know, sometimes we run into trouble with staffing and stuff on like half-days. We typically don't run the program if there's no school, that kind of stuff, where Parks and Rec might be more of like an encompassing, all-encompassing, like, hey, if you want to sign up for the vacation week, so if you need to, and then they will write into their like summer camp programs, right? So I think it makes it more of a universal, you know, kind of a, the goal is, it would be sort of like an easier, more comprehensive program for the parents who need that service. And then, you know, it would be good for them, a sort of like a program, of building a client base for them too, as far as their other programming and those types of things. We would probably still, at least for the foreseeable future, still host it, still hold it, like in the elementary school where it is now, but it would kind of be just, on paper, it would sort of be done as like normal, like we do to the summer playground, right? They technically rent the building from us, so we give them permission to use the building, and then they run their program, and then they would collect any of the fees, and they would hire the staff, and that kind of stuff. So, yeah, it's just a little more of a, it's something that, I'd say the, if you go back to the history of it, I think when I first got here, the program was very restricted. It was probably capped at maybe 15 or 20 kids or something like that, and it ran out of a small room, but we knew we had a huge list. And since then, it's grown to, I want to say it's max, it might have been like 80 kids or something like that that are staying after school. And the, so it's sort of become something that's bigger than really, I think, what we really envisioned, but it's really responding to a need, so we're hoping that bringing Parks and Rec on more as a partner to help meet that need will be, be a benefit to everyone. And the last thing in the packet is, we do have the winter sports and spring sports kind of updates here. We've got all of our, our All-Stars listed, recaps of each of the winter sports. And the, we did have the signing day, there's the list of the students who committed to play their sport in college. And then there's some updates on the spring season as well, just our preliminary numbers as we start offering that. We, I do know that, you know, we continue to have strong numbers in terms of being able to run like varsity and JV and like middle school programs, and, and what's becoming more and more of a scheduling challenge is, there's a lot of schools who historically have, some who sort of they've had very strong programs, who their numbers are just so low that they can't even, they're not even running JV programs or anything. So then you got to scramble to get, get games for your JV teams and those types of things, so. So that's, I mean, this is the, this report's from Athletic Director Smith. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments on it. I don't want to bore you by reading the entire thing, but. All right. I think that's all I had.
Any of our advisory committees have met in the last couple of weeks.
We will have curriculum on May 1. I know we do have that coming. I have one more meeting before that, but I think May 1, we set, just, we got a couple little changes for next year, we're probably going to review at that meeting.
And I think we got a, we got a facilities update last meeting, didn't we?
Yeah. And safety, we are still trying to stay on top of, by running a spring drill, and we'll probably have a safety meeting scheduled shortly after that drill, it'll be brief.
Maybe from the negotiations, but.
I'm in old business.
New business?
No, I'd say it's been crazy that we had an April nor'easter, an earthquake, and a solar eclipse in like five days. Like, I mean, we have four more days to make it through until, until vacation, so I'm hoping we can get there pretty quietly, so.
And you still haven't found another snow day for the seniors.
You know, I almost, I was almost going to say, like, seniors just stay home, I was sure that would land.
You're not making any frets. Motion to adjourn. So move.
I'll second.